And with prayer, as we pray, thanking God for the day. Thanking God for this opportunity that we have to come before Him. And to study His Word, to build our capacity in His Word. And to learn more and to growish and every day. So we have two things that we pray for. The first is basically to thank God for the day. Acknowledging that I'm making it through the days not out of our abilities. But it is by the grace of God and also for that opportunity. To continue growing uh through His Word or the study of His Word. So let us go before God and let us pray. Father, we thank you in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ. We thank you for your grace and for your mercy. We thank you. Amen. Uh let me acknowledge Pastor Mutus back with us. We welcome you back and Mama. And combine that with the thirty-seventh anniversary of your marriage. Ah, a lot of things on one. Thank you and welcome and congratulations all in one.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Pastor A. And I'm looking at our, I'm seeing that. I think people are chicken-ing away from a review, yeah? Only see five.
What makes you catch up?
Hmm. Now, I'm not sure whether we can continue with that. Um, is Brother Elias online?
Oh, yes, I'm here, Brother Gary.
Ah, okay, um. Brother Elias, our numbers are such that I don't think we can at this stage. Uh, continue with our trivia at this stage. I don't know what others think because obviously. If we were to do that, myself and Pastor would be out and it would be only just about two people or one. Um.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So, um, I think maybe what you can do is to just read through. Uh, if you are able, Brother Elias, to put up these verses, the eleven verses from Ephesians, chapter one. Uh, verses one to twelve. I don't know how many can fit, but if they could all. And then we read through that and then we have a discussion. I know.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing which I know for effect is that those letters, they are very deep. And I think from the presentations, group presentations, you could actually see just dealing with only one verse. People would come out with many, many slides and take up, you know, a substantive amount of their time. You know, going through, coming up with a lot of revelations. So I know that, uh, for effect, for example. When you see people, you know, sort of, I'm, 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 maybe there are other genuine reasons why people are not joining. But you'll find that it's something that I, I, when I saw the, the simple questions. Uh, personally, I enjoyed that kind of eh challenging questions. But then you also realize how deep uh Paul's letters are and how much um. You can glean or you can gather from, you know. So anyway, um, I will read what's on the screen. So this is Ephesians, chapter one, verses one, going through to eleven, but starting from one. Says, Paul, an apostle of Jesus Christ, by the will of God, to the saints who are in Eph- Eph- Ephesus. And faithful in Christ Jesus, grace to you and peace from God our Father and the Lord Jesus Christ. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places in Christ. Just as he chose us in him before the foundation of the world. That we should be holy and without blame before him in love. Having predestined us to adoption, as sons by Jesus Christ to himself. According to the good pleasure of his will, of his will, to the praise of the glory of his grace. By which he made us acceptable in the beloved. In him we have redemption through his blood, the forgiveness of sins. According to the riches of his grace, which he made to abound towards us in all wisdom and prudence. Having made known to us the mystery of his will, according to his good pleasure. Which he pro- which he proposed in himself. That in the dispensation of the fullness of the time. He might gather together in one all things in Christ. Both which are in heaven and which are on earth, in him. In him also we have obtained an inheritance, being predestined. According to the purposes of him, who works all things according to the counsel of his will. I like this version, which version is it, uh, which uh puts capital letters on, for example, in all the references uh to Jesus. Uh, it puts the capital letters, which sort of like helps in terms of identifying who uh they are talking about. Uh, how many people do we now have? Uh.
We have, we have about nine, I think.
Nine people? Subtract two. So I'm not sure whether we can continue with the trivia or we. Just have a general discussion of these verses uh for those who have. Ah, okay. So, uh, Brother Elias, uh, let's quickly do the trivia and then. Um, after that, we can then discuss.
Oh, sure.
So take us through, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So we're going to start up Kahoot. We have about uh thirteen questions altogether. Uh, Brother Gary, so I ended up just leaving it at twenty seconds. Uh, cause the questions were less than uh than the standard twenty that we usually do. Let's get started. Okay, so the game pin, can you guys hear? Okay, the game pin is one seven five zero three seven nine. So you can go to kahoot.it. So you can just type kahoot.it. You can skip the WWW, but you can put it in if you want. So let's leave. We have about, I think, eight eligible players today, so we invite everyone to join. All right, let's join in the next minute. Take out your phones. Take out your cell phones, your tablets. And uh go to www.kahoot.it. Then we can get started. So we just put a game together. Uh, well, everyone is joining. I'll just summarize. Well, we just put the questions together uh from all the presentations, which really covered uh. Uh, Ephesians, chapter one, verse one through ten. All right, so let's join, let's join, let's join. So we can play and then we can give the rest of our time back to Brother Gary and uh. Let's join, let's join, let's see you guys. We will, yes, oh, awesome. We're seeing, ah, all right, we're seeing the Berries, uh, we're seeing the Elliot's. Um, we're seeing uh TT that, I'm not sure who that is. Uh. All right, we're seeing TK Grandaddy, I think that's Pastor. We're seeing Lynn, uh. All right, all right. So we have most people in. So we'll give maybe another minute for others to join. Uh, just encouraging everyone to join. We want everyone to have fun. This is all about having fun. It's not a competition. We're just having fun, just re- revision really, you know, um. So it's not a competition to see who gets the most, you know. It is, but it isn't, you know. The spirit of it is just revision, just to. Have fun with it, you know, uh, you know, to just do your best and, you know, if you get an answer wrong. You find out where you get it wrong, you know. That's also a way for us to learn. All right, so I think we're gonna give thirty seconds more. We want the last people to join. We'll just give thirty seconds and then we'll begin. Let me just look at my time. Give us thirty seconds for any last people to join and then we'll begin. So if you haven't joined yet, just join right there. Kahoot.it, one seven five zero three, uh. And just join. Otherwise, we're getting started in a few seconds. Okay. So we're getting started now, if you haven't joined. All right, so we got everyone, so we're gonna start. So some, I'll read the questions along, but read as well on your own. The first question, right? Read. So read on your own as well, but I just read it anyway. According to Ephesians one, one, within which office within the five-fold ministries did Paul function? What was all Paul's office within the five-fold ministries? Yes, Paul was an apostle. Remember, you were saying Paul, an apostle of Jesus Christ. Uh, right, uh, as he was opening, uh. The ep- the epistles, right, uh, including Ephesians.
Brother Elias, can I ask your question?
Yes, yes.
I'm going, I'm doing it through Kahoot. I'm not doing it. I'm supposed to hit the, on the box in Kahoot, right?
Yeah, yeah, the box in Kahoot, yes. Oh, yeah, because, because I think sometimes it may not give you the question. It will just show you the boxes.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So I'll, I'll, do you want me to read the answers as well? Would that help? Or do you see the answer?
Let me see how, because the other, the other time I didn't see the, I didn't see any answer, so the box, so I wasn't sure.
Same here, I only saw the box. I didn't know what the answers were.
Oh, wow, okay, uh. Because you're in, okay, do you have another device that you are using WebEx or you're using the same? You're probably using the same device for WebEx and uh.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Okay. Uh, I can try and read the answers, but that may give you a small disadvantage, um. But yeah, I can try to read the answers as we, as we go.
Okay.
So the second question says, Paul had a standard salutation, a trademark of his writings. Which of the following book, books does not include this salutation? Red is Ephesians, blue is Corinthians, uh, orange is Philippians, green is Hebrews. Which book did not include the salutation from Paul? Yes, it was Hebrews, it was Hebrews. All right, let's go. The next question. Ephesus is located in which modern-day country? Red is Israel, blue is Turkey, Syria is orange, Lebanon is green. Which modern-day country is Ephesus located in? Wow, that's amazing. Oh, wow, that's fantastic. Everyone got that right. Oh, it's more located in Turkey. All right, next question. Who was Paul's emissary that carried Paul's letters to the Ephesians? Who carried Paul's letters to the Ephesians? Red is Timothy, Titus is blue, Titus is orange, Demas is green. All right. It was Titus again. I do, I'm pronouncing that wrong. In Ephesians one, three, uh, which says blessed is the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. Is there significance to this verse? Is there? Any significance to Paul? Using that phrase at the beginning. Uh, there is no significance. Blue is, yes, uh, Paul is merely continuing his salutations. Orange is, yes, Paul is saying we must exalt and praise God. Oh man. Uh, so the, the guys that are using only their phones, are you able to uh go on WebEx on another device? So you can see the question, because some of the answers are very long. I don't know, does that make sense, Brother Tabus, Sister Marlene?
Um, let me see, I think they got my, they have my own computer.
We, we can just follow Brother, Brother.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, we just follow.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. So I'll try to keep reading them above there. All right, next question is, according to Ephesians, one, from one to ten, which of the following is not included as a spiritual blessing? Uh, great. Which one of these is included in verse thirteen of that? The first one is the. Oh, yes, yes, you got that right. So verse thirteen, that's when you find this uh spiritual blessing where. You know, they said, you know, where Paul writes that, you know, we are sealed, right, with the Holy Spirit, right? Uh, with the promise of Holy Spirit. You won't find that from verse one to ten. Uh, true or false, Paul writes the letter to the Ephesians during his second and final imprisonment in Rome. Where he also wrote second Timothy. Paul wrote, did Paul write Ephesians, or Paul wrote Ephesians during his second imprisonment? True or false? Paul's, yes, all of us got that right. He wrote it in his first imprisonment. Where he wrote the other prisoner episodes as well. All right, the next question. According to Ephesians one, verse seven, why do we need to be redeemed and how did Christ redeem us? Why do we need to be redeemed and how did Christ redeem us? So Ephesians one seven says, in him we have redemption through his blood, the forg- forgiveness of sins. So, why do we need to be redeemed and how did he redeem us? All right, uh, so this was the two-part question, that's why. Uh, so in some of them, you'll see that the first part is correct, but the second part is incorrect. So the first part is, of course, us saying mankind fell through Adam. Uh, and then the second part is saying that Christ went to the cross and shed his blood. That's how he redeemed, redeemed us. The first part is talking about why we needed to be redeemed. So it was a two-part answer, uh. Let me just, uh. In Ephesians, one, verse seven, Paul addresses the theme of remission of sin. What's the significance of? Remission or forgiveness of sin? What's the significance or of remission or forgiveness of sin? What is it important? Right, yes, all the above, yeah, that is correct. Believers are reconciled to, to Father God, uh, back to Father God, uh, through. Uh, remission of sin, right, because sin separates us. Believers are made righteous through Christ. And our pleasures of all righteousness, believers are in right standing and can worship uh God with upright hearts. So all these things are true, that when, with this remission of sin. Were able to worship our Father God and were able to be reconciled back to him. Uh, the next question is. True or false, uh, the Greek word, uh. Norizo, uh, in Ephesians one, verse nine, means to cause information to be made known by. Someone communicating things before unknown. True or false? It is true, it is true. Uh, the Greek word norizo used by Paul in Ephesians, one, verse nine. Means to cause information to be known by someone communicating things before unknown or reasserting things already known. Re- referring to spiritual insight and understanding. So, yeah, uh, Kahoot, uh, doesn't allow. Sentences to be a certain length, so we had to shorten that question. So that's why I just reread it. According to Ephesians one, nine, what does Paul mean when he says God made us? Made known to us the will of his, the mystery of his will. God made known to us the mystery of his will. What does Paul mean? Exactly, that, uh, so let me read the longer version of that. It, it essentially, it means a God's divine plan and purpose, which was previously hidden. But has now been revealed through Christ Jesus. That, that, that is, that explains the mystery of God, right? Uh, or, or the mystery of his will that's being, uh, revealed. All right, let's go to the next question. Okay, the next question. According to Ephesians one, verse ten, which dispensation will all things in heaven and on earth be placed under Christ? Red, dispensation of law, blue, dispensation of grace, orange, dispensation of divine government of millennium. Uh, green, dispensation of human government. So which dispensation will all things in heaven and on earth be placed under Christ? Yes, the dispensation of divine government and millennium, the millennium rule of Christ. All right, uh. The last question, according to Ephesians one, verse ten and thirteen, I think. Uh, which dispensation is, are we living in today, right? As of today. Which dispensation are we currently a part of? Yes, we're in the dispensation of grace. Oh, that's awesome. Congratulations. So here are the results. Number three is TT, number two is TK Grandaddy, and number one. Is the, so, congratulations, guys. Let me. Stop here and I'll give back to uh Brother Gary to take us from here.
Thank you. Thank you, Brother Elias. That was an interesting. Uh, I, I, I was saying, you know, when you look at the questions, even if you were to go. Through the presentation, some of the answers you may not find, but I think. It just challenges us to go do our own research and our own reviews. Uh, of the questions as we go. You know, as we, the, the idea really is that. Is each group, for, for example, one thing you will notice is that every group from group one. When they would start, regardless of their question or of this assignment, they would give the background. And then, so as that is repeated, let's say five times. Ultimately, you get to just, it sinks in. And after we are finished with the book of Ephesians. There are things that you can now quickly answer about Ephesians. Uh, without, uh, you know, thinking about it, because with repetition. Uh, eventually, we, we, we do get it. I think you know the power of repetition. So I want to thank you, Brother Elias, for that very interesting trivia session. And of course, we just, uh, challenges us to, uh, also read back after every, you know. I know most people, they will be active during their group presentations, and then after that, uh, some may switch off. But this will help us to try and cover all the questions. Now, I don't know if there are any, I have one or two pastors now here with us. And for me, there are a few, uh, provoking questions that I have. Which I would want at some stage to pose to Pa- pastor. And of course, the purpose is really to. To broaden our, or to go deeper on these issues, of course, that the groups covered, obviously. Uh, but I know for myself, sometimes there wouldn't be enough time to. Ask those challenging questions, uh, especially to the pastors. Pastor has not been here for the past two weeks. So, um, before I come in, uh, any other pressing questions? Anyone who says, uh, this from our reading from Ephesians, chapter one, verse one to eleven. I did not fully understand. This is your opportunity. Uh, we cannot leave these verses and continue, and yet you have some issues that you still cannot answer. P- pertaining to the verses that we have, uh, covered. So this is the opportunity to say, this I do not understand. Um, or if you have something that you really want to build upon what has already been given to say on this verse. I have this extra revelation and so that it helps all of us. So I'm opening up this opportunity to, uh, all of us to. For those who have questions, uh, contributions to come in. So the floor is open, anyone who. If you don't ask, it means you are fine and you will allow me to ask my own questions and I can pick anyone to answer. Anyway, questions, contributions. Ephesians is a very interesting book. I'll be surprised if there are no interesting questions equal. Anyone on the, am I alone? Let me see. Okay, can I ask the questions then? Is there anyone online?
I think he should go ahead and ask.
But I'll be picking people to ask pastor.
I think it's good.
Okay. Are, are we all agreed?
Silence means the content.
We, we will find out very soon. Uh, Sister Marlene, what does it really mean when the Bible says? Or Ephesians four says, he chose us in him before the foundation of the world? What does this really mean? And the fact that he actually chose us to be holy and without blame? What, what does this mean? I know, uh, I think it was group three, uh, covered this. But, uh, in general, what is your understanding about this?
The question was that, um, what does it mean when he asked, um. When he asks, um, what does it mean, but that he chose us?
When, when the Bible says he chose us in him before the foundation of the world. And it says that the reason why he chose us is so that would be holy and without blame. What does this, what, what do you understand by this?
My understanding is that, um, because he knew us before we were formed in our mother's womb. That, um, you know, he, if he knew us before we became flesh and blood. Right, he, God knew us, and his plans for us, um, was for us to be saved. Right, so, and he, he knew each one of us. He knew, um, every hair on our head, every, you know, everything about us. So he knew, he knows who is gonna be saved and who is not. He knows his own people. Uh, even though his desire is that we all be saved. But he knows his people. He knows that called out the ones that, that's name is written in the, in the Lamb's book of life. He knew, he knows us. So that's my understanding that, um. When he, when he says he knew us before the foundation, we were in him before the foundation of the world.
Thank you, Sister Marlene. Well, well, well answered. I don't know if there's anyone who wants to come in again before I. or comment on Sister Marlene's question, on her response. Anyone who wants to come in? Okay, Sister Marlene, thank you so much. In actual fact, you, to be honest, this is one, it's a very good answer in the sense that before the foundation, God, do you know that when we talk about Alpha, Omega, actually, most people say Alpha and Omega. But when you read in the original, it says Alpha, Omega, not Alpha and Omega. So he is the beginning and the end. What you will see is that, uh, time, I always try to explain. Time exists only for us. Yesterday exists because we were created in time and for time and we are bound by time. Of course, there are, we can try and explain the purpose of time in our lives. It marks, it is, it marks demarcations. It's, it marks progression for you to know that you are progressing. You need to measure it against time. Things that you need to do, goals, they are time-bound and stuff like that. But the point is, before God created time, he already was. So he is outside of time. And what this means is, when God decides to do something like a master planner, he already would have the design of that which he wants to do. So when you look at the universe, when you look at yourself as an individual, everything is well-planned from your body structure, where your nose is, your eyes are, your feet, your legs. It points to someone who is very, very meticulous in terms of planning and knowing what you are supposed to do, how you are going to do that, your fingers, how they function, where they are, everything. Not only that, when you go into the internal functions of your organs and you look at everything, it shows that God knows, you know, exactly what he's doing. And what it means is that even in creating you, you know, one of the things that challenges me is that, do you know that God removed Peter and Paul? Have you read in Exodus? You know, people would bring the sick people out so that when Peter would be walking, his shadow would just, you know, fall on the sick and they will be healed. Paul himself would send his handkerchief and people would be healed. Can you imagine that God took Peter and Paul out of this world? And then he put you and me at this particular time? This is a time when we are feeling like, oh, this world is evil. This world is getting worse, it's gotten darker. And then he removes people like Paul and Peter, then he puts you and me. Now the question is, if he knew all this ahead of time? So that's where the question comes. He chose us, he chose us in himself before the foundation. He says, oh no, this, in actual fact, when you read Ephesians, there's that emphasis on the fullness of time, you know? Things that were hidden, but which are now being revealed now in the fullness of time. The mysteries, you know, that are now being revealed in the fullness of time. So what, what I'm trying to point out is, God is a specialist in dispensations. And in this particular, in the fullness of this dispensation, he brought Jesus, the Holy Spirit came, and then you and I. So the, my point really is to say, number one, God knew all this. There is nothing that is by mistake. Each and every one of us, we are here for a purpose. And this is where my second, actually, issue was going to go. When the Bible says that he blessed us with all spiritual blessings. All of them, not even a single spiritual blessing is missing. And you will see that these spiritual blessings, they are an empowerment for us to do the purpose for which God called us. So we are designed for this time and for the purpose for which he created us. So I hope you get my point that, number one, he never makes mistakes, which means that even your existence is this particular time and not Paul, it's by design. And not only when you read even in Genesis, chapter 1, you will see that in creation from Genesis, chapter 1, when he creates everything. And then on the last day, day number six in the evening, that is when he created men and women. When he had, you know, had the earth and the, the, the trees to give fruit, all the animals for food, everything, the garden, everything set, and then he created men. What it means is, he prepares everything ahead of your establishment and coming in. So at this stage, you and I, we are here. And he has given us all spiritual, he has blessed us with all spiritual blessings. In every spiritual blessing that you can think of in heaven, please, he has blessed us. It's at our disposal. Can you imagine? You know, I was thinking as I was coming from work today, I was saying, I think for me personally, I'm, I'm, okay, maybe this is not something that I shouldn't necessarily be sharing. But there's a determination that I'm making to say, there are things that I really need to do because I'm getting to fully understand that everything, I have the power to change my life, to transform my life totally, to be the very person that God wants me to be. And I'm trying to set timelines for myself to say, I really need to transform myself because I have everything. It is within me right now. All of us, not just me, all of us, we have everything that we desire. For example, if you decide that I want to start to live a victorious life, starting from today, you can do it. It might take three months, you can set time, six months, to say, I really need to be that person that God wants me to be. And the best thing is, you already have God's desire on your side. You have God's, uh, you know, we will normally say when we're reading in James, chapter 1, we say that we should pray, praying amiss, praying outside of the will of God. God actually designed you to be that person. And we are saying that for you to desire to be the person that God wants you to be is technically, or in every other way you look at it, you are in his will. So he is desiring us for you to be the best version of you, which he himself designed. And at your disposal are all the spiritual blessings. He knew about this time, it's not a mistake. Even the darkness that is in this, we are all equipped to overcome this darkness and to live a victorious and fruitful life. So this is where I'm, to be honest, and this is where I wanted to come back on these verses in terms of our review. Because when the groups were presenting, yes, and of course, uh, sometimes you would see that to bring this point would need another hour on itself. So in a way, it was like, those are issues that would need their own time to discuss. And I'm happy that after our trivia, we have this time to discuss those very critical points. These are some of the reasons why we chose Ephesians of all books. It's one of the powerful books in the Bible. He chose us in himself before the foundation. When you start to understand these things, you, 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 you grow confident in who you are and what God, and it makes you less susceptible to the machinations and the devices of the devil. So anyway, I don't want to continue because I can go on and on. But I just wanted to bring out this issue. He chose us before the fall. There is nothing, he's not caught by surprise. Whatever we are going through, number one, he has equipped us sufficiently to deal with everything. And this time, it's not a mistake. Nobody's a mistake, regardless of the circumstances of how you got to be in this world. I always talk about this, some of these things, they seem to be, I mean, sensitive to talk about. But no matter how you came to be, the fact that you are, God allowed you to live because he is the giver of life. If the circumstances were not in line with his will, you could have died or you could not even have been conceived in the first place, regardless of circumstances. Let me just give you an example of incest. The, the, the fact that conception happens and life and a person is born and God gives them life, it means this is no longer a mistake, regardless of the circumstances. But once that child, that life is there, this is no longer a mistake. So my point is, and not only are we not a mistake, we have everything. All the spiritual blessings, they are there. And when the Bible talks about in heavenly places, these are not physical blessings. So it means spiritual blessings are way more superior to material blessings. Because material blessings, number one, they come and they go. But it is the spiritual blessings that enable you to continuously, or to replicate the, the, the reception of those material blessings. This is why it's so important that, you know, we have stories of people who win the lottery, a lot of money. And then after a few months or years, they are so broke even beyond where they were when they won that. Because they don't have that kind of blessing that sustains what they get. But when you have the spiritual blessings, for example, to, for money, it sustains, even if you lose what you currently have. Because of that blessing, it enables you, because it is he who enables you or gives you the power to, to, to make wealth. And the Bible says that he gives wealth and he adds no soul. He blesses and there's no... I mean, I can go on and on, but I hope you get the point. And this is a very powerful point, which I wanted to highlight. So I'll again open the floor. If there are any other revelations or persons after this icebreaker. If not, I'll come back again with another question. Any questions? Okay, I'll go on before I give back to pastor. Whilst we are looking at verse 4, okay, this one is a bit longish. So if I were to start it, we may not finish. "They want to do with being holy and without blame before him in love." This is something that I briefly touched on on Sunday, but I don't think we have time today. Because I think if we started, this is something that we need to finish. So let me find my next person. Uh, which I wanted to raise or to emphasize. "And I was in him, we have redemption through his blood, the forgiveness of sin according to the riches." This again, to me, is tied to that, without being holy, without being holy and without blame, I will skip it for now. But those are the most interesting that I have. Anyway. Okay, this, I think, group, was it 4? 4, they did cover, having made known to us the mystery of his will. Because I really wanted, after the presentation, to understand, what is that mystery? Do we now know that means mystery? So maybe let me ask again, the bearers, who's there, Brother Tabu? Brother Tabu, uh, is the mystery, no, is, is, is the, was the mystery solved in verse 9? To you? Brother Tabu?
Uh, I'm here, I'm here.
Yes.
I'm going to the verse. Can you?
Is it?
Can you put the verse?
Verse 9, Brother Elias, Ephesians 1, verse 9. Are we still in the mysteries? Is there still a mystery or the mystery has been resolved?
Um, in wisdom, it was, it was his will, I think. I think the mystery has been resolved by, you know, sending his son, Jesus Christ, to die for sins. And I think that was the mystery.
Yes, the mystery of his will, which was basically, when you read down, of course, it says, the answer is basically there, that in the dispensation of the fullness of the time, he might, so the mystery of his will, which is, uh, that in the dispensation of the fullness of time, he might gather together in one, all things in Christ. Yeah, we, we, I, this is where the issue of dispensation comes in and is very important. Uh, when you look at especially the first, uh, well, let, let me pick just the 3. The, okay, 1 and, 1 and 2 are almost the same, but I will split them for purposes of explanation. And then the third dispensation. Or the first one, I would say, the Jewish nation itself. And then the Jews after, during, after Jesus. And then ourselves. So we all know, when you read in Genesis, chapter 12, the Bible just says, "Now the Lord said to Abraham, 'Leave your people and your land and go to this land, which I will show you, I will make you a nation.'" What is God doing here? And I think at some stage, I explained it to say that after creation in Genesis, chapter 1, every time God created and handed over to men, the minute that he handed over to men, things would start going down and then you would need to rescue. And then when he rescues and starts afresh, things would again, initially for a few weeks or days or months or years, things would be, okay, what am I talking about? After creation, chapter 26, 28, and then blessed men, and then put him in the garden. The next thing, men sinned. And then you start seeing that as men increase in the effects of the earth. By the time we come to Genesis, chapter 6, Noah has already come and the people have been destroyed. And then they start also again growing. So it's, it's like a reset button. And then they start, by the time we get to 11, Tower of Babel, they are scattered. And then 12, Abraham. Now, Abraham now, he starts a new people or generation or nation called the Hebrew, which God says, "I am your people and you are my people. You will be called by my name, separate from all the..." This was, this was a holy nation, a peculiar people, a people called by God's name, right? Different from all the other people. So this is, this carried on until the days of Jesus. And during Jesus' time, even Jesus himself, he would say, "I was sent only to the lost tribe of Israel." Remember the story of the woman of Sidon and Tira, we had a daughter who was sick. And Jesus kept quiet and he said, you see? So my point is, so there's that era of the Hebrews. And then during Jesus' time or after, the Jews are now starting to mix with the Gentiles, which is a second era. I'm trying to explain this whole bringing together all things in Christ. So there were many divisions. You know the story about the Samaritan and the Judeans? Even the Jews themselves, at some stage, they split. I always talk about the time of Rehoboam and Jehoboam. Rehoboam, the son of Solomon, and Geroboam. And that led to the split of Israel into two, two tribes on one side and the other 10 on one side. So there was that separation of Samaritans and Jews. And there were a lot. Now, we are talking about now, after Jesus, everything. And this is why Paul then said, there is no Gentile, no Jew, no black, no white, no female, no... All are one and they are in Christ. So the mysteries that bringing together of everything under Christ to say, and the Bible says that this was done in the dispensation of time. Why? Because there was a time when there were those marked divisions. When you would say, no, you are a Gentile. And the Gentile, we always explain that doesn't mean black. It just means even the whites who are not Jews or Hebrews, they were Gentiles. So that's all those separations in Christ Jesus, the partition was now. And I think I remember Brother Elias in my, his voice in my head, talking about the, the, the tiering of the veil from the top to the bottom. It was heavy, it could not be torn by hands. And it's tearing from top to bottom means that it's, this is God made, not man made. And then when that partition was opened in Jesus, that's why the Bible says, he came to his, in John, chapter 1, verse, "He came to his people, but they rejected him. But to anyone, to as many as accept him, he has, he gives them the power or the authority to be called the sons of God." So basically, I'm trying to, to, to explain in such a way that we no longer have mysteries in Hebrews or in Ephesians, chapter 1 to 11, which we have covered. So that if I were, like I'm doing now, asks, asking a question on any of those verses, any one of us should be able to articulate. Anyway, I think for now, I'll end here and I'll give pastor, who has been away for a long time. And I'm sure he has a lot to share with us on these verses. So pastor, can I open the floor to you to just share with us? It's the Holy Spirit. Of course, the, all the verses are... It's the only, of course, the all the verses are open for you to share as you wish.
Thank you, brother Karkai. Thank you everyone online. Uh God is a good God, has given us this opportunity to gather to study his word. And I thank you for continuing to study and thanking those who join the trivia. It's important, it helps us just to revise. You can also find similar scriptures in um, I think first Peter chapter, no, uh second Peter chapter one. Uh God of second Peter chapter one, verse is um two, two, three, I think. Or maybe, maybe the verse four. So it's a similar thought and uh which uh Peter also writes. And um it 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 coincides with what Paul also said. Remember, these people are not writing, you know, planning to write and thinking, you know, and say, oh, you write now and then I'll write later. They just, they just wrote as they were inspired by the Holy Spirit, but the beauty of it is, you find that there's a convergence in the thoughts and in the message. Peter says here, grace and peace be multiplied to you in the knowledge of God and of Jesus, our Lord, as his divine power is given to us all things that pertain to life, the godliness, through the knowledge of Jesus or him who called us by glory and virtue, by which he, by which have been given to us exceedingly great and precious promises, that through these you may be partakers of the divine nature, having escaped the corruption that is in the world through lust. So it's the same message which Paul is also telling us, that we have been redeemed by grace, by the Lord Jesus. And Jesus has, has has given this empowerment, this enablement, that all, you know, should should be saved and that we should receive all those promises which uh God has intended for us. The other one is uh first Timothy chapter two. First Timothy chapter two. Um. I think verse three is good, three and four. He said, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. So. I'm I'm I'm, I I thought about this scripture when we, when brother Karkai was talking about um God having um redeemed us in Christ, having chosen us in Christ before the foundation of the world. You know, the the, and and sister Malina explained that God knew us even before we were flesh and blood, even before our mother and father came together, as he says to Jeremiah. So it means we, our 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 mother and our father coming together is just the conclusion of what has already begun. We were, we were a soul and a person before our mothers met, so. Because God has that kind of knowledge, he also has the knowledge that you are saved or you are not saved. The 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 challenge which we have in our thought processes is that we think, well, if he has that knowledge, then then those who are not chosen, it's his fault. There's there's that debate, I don't know, maybe it's just me, there's that debate in in your mind to say, but 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 if he knows all this, then I can't be blamed for not having been chosen. You know, and then we go to the whole debate of predestined as in Christ Jesus. It's a very challenging con- concept to grasp and to understand. Because you're saying God is fair, God is a God of opportunity, so I does he live there that's to perish. And I can't pretend that I evolved, answered, and wrapped my hand, my head around the predestined. All I know is, God is a fair God, God is a good God. God will give you your chances to repent and to accept him. And he will send his Holy Spirit to persuade you, but ultimately it's your choice. And even though God knows what choice you will make, it's not as if he is excluding you or pushing you out. You know, so that that to me is really a a challenging concept, but all we know is, if we love God so much and we give ourselves to him, God will not reject us. You know, so it's ultimately it's up to us. Of course, he has sent, you know, he's he has given us all all this, all the 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 divine power, right, as explained by Peter, that we we we, in this life, we can be successful, in the things of God and goodness, we can be successful. And we can, we we are saved and we are safe. The other one which I wanted to read is Galatians chapter four. I um, I think Galatians chapter four, I'm still trying to see the verse. But if you go there, I should be able to. Uh I think it's verse three. Even so, when we were children, um when we were children, we were in bondage under the enemies of the world. But when the fullness of the time had come, that's the one which I really want. God sent for the son born of a woman, born under the law, to redeem those who were under the law, that we might receive the adoption as a. So it's the same thought again, which he 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 wrote to the Ephesians, he also wrote to the Galatians. The same um thought that God has dispensations, as brother Karkai was explaining. And this dispensation can be viewed in many different ways. Brother Karkai just gave us one, we're looking, you're looking at, you know, the the before, before Abraham is cold, right? The dispensation, and then the time of Abraham. And then, of course, the time of the Jews, and then Christ comes, and then the time after Christ. And some will say innocence, you know, and then they will say conscience, then they will say government, and 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 then the law, and then, you know, the transgressor until you come to to grace where we are now. I've read some script, some some commentaries, which say there are thirty five dispensations, depending on how you chop them, but some say they are seven. So it just depends how you 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 look at it. Now, the fullness of time is brother Tabu explained to us, yes. So these are, these are the seven, but others claim they are thirty seven. So there's innocence, there's conscience, there's human government, there's promise, there's the law, the promise is Abraham, right? Then there's the law, which is Moses, then grace, which is us as Christ, then the divine uh government, the millennium, which also was explained in by, in the Kahoot game, where God is bringing those in heaven and those on the earth and bringing them as one. That is what we, so be- between dispensation, uh between the grace and the divine government is only rapture. Once the rapture happens, then the divine government is going to come into into effect. Well, there's some talk about seven years, where there's going to be, you know, training for those who are caught up, who go to heaven, they're going to be trained and given their rewards. That is the be my judgment of Christ. And 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 then trained and given roles and functions. Then Christ comes and he he overcomes those who want to prevent him from coming. Then he rules for a millennium, uh which is a thousand years, here on earth, before the end of the world. Right? So these are the dispensation, but the point is, um the fullness of time was Christ, who is the mystery, coming to earth through Mary and then living thirty three years, then going to the cross and being healed as the lamb of God, then offered up. And then he becomes the Savior and he redeems us. So that is really the mi- the mystery. And I think in Matthew, I can't remember the scripture, where where where, I think, where I'm not sure now whether it's Matthew or it's John, uh where Jesus is talking to the Pharisees, the Jews, and he says, your father Abraham actually looked forward to the day of my coming. Right? And so, the the why? Because it was a mystery, they were not quite. Christ was not revealed in the Old Testament, even though he is there. You will, we read him from Genesis chapter three, verse fifteen, right? And it's called the seat of the woman, right? And you go through all the books of the Old Testament, Christ is there, but he's there in hidden form. And he talks to his disciples in uh in Luke chapter twenty four. You know, those going to the, to to a mouse. And uh and and he started to share with them and to reveal to them Christ. Why was he revealing? Because it had been a mystery. Because the, it was shrouded in secrecy. And it's not, it was not so obvious as it is now in the New Testament, right? So so go go to to um, to to Luke chapter twenty four. Let's go to this genuine, Christ is walking with these men to a mouse and they didn't know. And then he explained to them, he actually says, from the book of Moses and the Psalms, he explained, keep going, keep going where you, until you find something which is like that. Okay, remember how he spoke, okay? So he goes from verse uh six, he is not, he, why did you seek the living among the dead, right? Oh, let's start from verse four, and it happened as they were greatly perplexed about this, that that uh, behold, two men stood by in which I didn't governments when they are afraid, why are you seeking the dead among the living? The son of God will be delivered in the hands, they remember this words that they return. Oh, keep going, I want to go to where Jesus himself was, these these are the angels. Where Jesus was now walking, right, rode to a mouse. Now behold, two of them were traveling that same day to a village called a mouse. One of them is explained in other scriptures that he was clover, right? But I think in in Luke is not, is not explained, but I think in other scriptures, in the others, not tick. Now behold, two of them were traveling that same day to a village called a mouse, uh which was seven miles from Jerusalem, but they talked together of all these things which had happened. So it was, while they conversed and reasoned that Jesus himself drew near and went with them, but their eyes were restrained, okay? So even the whole Old Testament, the eyes of our understanding of those who read the who in that time, their eyes went, were restrained, so that they did not know him. This is what was happening in the Old Testament. It it is really a a covered, hidden, Christ is there, but he's hidden, right? In the same way that as you walked with these two gentlemen to a mouse, their eyes were also covered, they didn't know. And he said to them, this is now Jesus said, what kind of conversation is this that you have with one another as you walk and are said? Right? He had also already seen their demeanor, that this guy's really sad. Then one whose name was Clovis, ah, so okay, yes, they say. Then one whose name was Clovis answered and said to him, are you the only stranger in Jerusalem and you have not known things which happened there in these days? And he said to them, what things? You see, this is one of the things which you have to understand about God. God will ask you questions, not because he doesn't know, like he asked Adam, where are you? It's not like he doesn't know that this guy is hiding under the bush, which bush was 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 quoted as being in the presence of the Lord. So on your, I believe the presence of the Lord, behind the bush, you think God can't see you. And when he asks you, he's not asking what your political location, he's asking you, where are you? In your walk with me, in your relationship with me, what are you doing, what have you done? Once God starts asking you questions, you know that he's he's not, he's not looking for information, no, no, no. He's asking you to think deeply and make changes. So they said to him, the things concerning Jesus of Nazareth, who was a prophet, you see? They thought he was a prophet, mighty indeed in word before God and all the people. They didn't even see him as a Messiah or as a Savior. They just saw him as a prophet like Isaiah and Jeremiah and so forth, which uh the disciple, the disciple said in 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 uh in Matthew sixteen, when he asked them, what do the men say, I am, and then what do you say, I am? And how the chief priest and and our ruler has delivered him to be condemned to death and crucified him. But we were hoping that it was he who was uh going to redeem Israel, is it? They were looking for a political leader. Even when Jesus came in his time, they were looking for a political leader to redeem them from the oppression of the Romans, that's what they wanted. They were not thinking about heaven and eternal plan, which which is, which is why it it was a mystery. Right? Because they were looking for political redemption, they were not looking for spiritual, you know, and indeed, besides all this today is the third day since these things happened, yes. And certain women of our company who are up there, the tomb early astonished us. When they did not find this body, they came saying that they had also seen a vision of angels who said he was alive. This is a story being told by someone who actually doesn't believe, he's like, ah, these women also came and gave us this funny story. You know, and certain of those who were with us went to the tomb and found it, just as the women had said, but him, they did not see. You see, Christ is elusive, you you know, that's why he's a mystery. I'm just eh eh explaining the mysticism or the mystery part of Christ. So Jesus said to them, all foolish ones, in slow heart to believe, in all that the prophets have spoken, ought not the Christ who have suffered these things and to enter into his glory. So he's saying, listen, this is God's plan from the beginning. This is, he's now unpe- unpacking the mystery. He's saying, this is God's plan to bring uh the redemption to mankind, for Christ to enter his glory, for people to be redeemed of their sins, not as a political leader, no, no, but as Messiah. And be- beginning at Moses. When you hear beginning at Moses, he's talking about Genesis, Exodus, the Viticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy. He's talking about the Torah, right? So when he says beginning at Moses, Jesus began to explain to them the Torah and all the prophets. Right? Remember all the twelve prophets that come, you know, the the first major four prophets and the twelve minor prophets. All of them had come up to Ma- Micah. So Jesus expounded to them, explained to them in all the scriptures, the things concerning himself, right? That is the revelation of the mystery. So Christ went to every book in the Old Testament and explained who the Messiah and the Christ is. He now unpacked, he now revealed the mystery. So this is the revelation and the expounding of the of the mystery. He is now revealing himself that the Old Testament is about me, but I was hidden in the way it was written. And now I am unpacking to you. This is what then Paul and 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 Peter and all the others who went forth to do as they said, we are now revealing the mystery. The mystery is Christ and God's plan coming to the world to redeem us, not political, no, no, but spiritually, so for for eternity, right? That is the, that is the uh revelation of 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 that. I think that's what I want to to say and I want to thank you so much for doing this Bible study, it is important, it is critical that we, we are just anchoring our faith so that we are not, you know, surface cretins. Those were just blown up apart by every kind of toxin. And Paul writes about that in Ephesians chapter four, we're going to get to it. We have to deepen our understanding of Christ and to have that assurance in him that he loves us and that he means what he says. And that he knew us before we even came into our form. and that he destined us to, for adoption as the sons and daughters of our God. Thank you, Brother Galca.
Uh, thank you, pastor. Thank you so much for, uh, sharing your take on the scriptures and emphasizing, uh, the mystery and the revelation to it thereof. Um, let me, I want to share, eh, what our groups, uh, the next batch of questions, our oral verses for all the five groups for starting next week. But before I do, pastor, I just wanted to, to share with the saints, uh, from the bottom of my heart, the, you, you know, when we talk about how God is purposeful, how he, you know, something that I highlighted on Sunday to say, immaturity, it's not op- it's not an option. And being stagnant in terms of growing in the knowledge of, uh, God, it's not an option. And you will find, uh, this later on in life, I think, for as many as are called by God for a purpose, you will discover this. And I think there are some things that happen to some people so that others may learn. And for me, um, well, it's something that I've known for some time, uh, that, you know, there was a time, I think God was calling me to go deeper and I was rebelling against him. Not that I did anything special, but I, I would refuse. I had access to books and stuff and knowledge in general. But I deliberately, in my thinking, I knew that if I were to study, I knew what would happen. And for me, I was like, I don't want to be so. I, I, I knew the Bible just reading it, but I didn't want to study it in depth because I feared, uh, you know what would happen and, you know, those days you'd think, uh, if I do study the Bible, then I'll become a pastor. And if there's one thing that I never wanted to hear, it was this issue about going into ministry. Of course, even up to now, but at some stage you see that you really don't have an option. But what happens is, there is a reason why God wants you to grow. And this is why I'm laughing Ephesians, chapter four, which is one of our, uh, you know, when we talk about growing into the full measure, you know, when we come to that unit of faith and to the knowledge of the Son of God, coming to that knowledge of the Son of God, to a perfect man, to the measure of the stature of the fullness of Christ. What it means is, there is a measure of the fullness of Christ and we need to come to that measure. And God has measured us differently in terms of the fullness to say, "This, for me to be perfect, I need to be six, for pastor it needs to be twelve, for sister Linus four or whatever." Every one of us has to come to that full measure. If you don't come to your full measure of your knowledge of God and the fullness of Christ in you, God has designed you to be effective in life and to be victorious when you come to that full measure. If you think you've got an option and you don't grow, there are things that will come because God already knows what will happen in life. And it's not necessarily some bad things and stuff, but there will be life challenges that will need for you to succeed, to be at your best, to be perfect, not as in faultless, but to be, to come to that full measure of the stature of Christ in yourself. So I'm coming to realize it in a very painful way, that if I had grown to be the person that God wanted to be, me to be, there are things that I would, I could deal with in life in such a way that, uh, I would have developed my capacity, uh, to deal with those things. Now, anyway, why I'm saying this, I really want to emphasize the point that we really need to study the Word of God. And when I'm making this encouragement, I'm not talking, I'm not asking people to, 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 to go to pastor, to me. I'm just asking people to study their word, their Bible. Study, take time, find time, it's so important and don't be like me. And then after time is, is past and you realize that I wish I had done this. Because for, for some of us who have been Christians for many years, two decades and a half, something like this. And you know that during that time, if I really wanted to develop myself as I knew I ought to have done, I would be somewhere in terms of my spiritual growth. Anyway, it's a very long story, but to be honest, please, let's not take this opportunity for granted. Let's study, even when we assign these scriptures that Paul is so deep that even in one verse, there are so many things that if you try to unpack them. So my, my, my encouragement is take time to study and take this opportunity to really develop yourself, even if you have this assignment. So anyway, we are now out of time, but quickly, so as next week, we'll have group one. Uh, group one was complaining that they always do the introduction, but my argument, which I didn't give back then, uh, or it was not group one, it's one member of, of the group one who remain anonymous because I stay with it. Uh, she was complaining that I will give group one only to give the introduction. But yes, group one's opportunity to go into the body. And, uh, group one, you'll be looking at Ephesians, chapter one, verse thirteen and fourteen. Group one, Ephesians, thirteen and fourteen. Group one, Ephesians, thirteen and fourteen, which means group two, you'll be looking at Ephesians, chapter one, verses fifteen to seventeen. Fifteen to seventeen, fifteen to seventeen. Uh, for group three, it's becoming difficult for me to break this in the middle. So what I will do for group three, you can look at Ephesians, chapter one, verses eighteen to, you can include nineteen if you want, eighteen and nineteen. I had said eighteen only because I wanted to break it somewhere, I'm, I'm having a challenge. Because for group four, I would say, look at nineteen and twenty. So group three, you can do eighteen and nineteen. And group four, you can still do nineteen and twenty. Because there are things that for group four, they would need to borrow from verses nineteen. And for group three, there are things that they would want for this sentence to be complete, uh, to borrow from nineteen. I don't know how we do it. And then group, uh, how many groups did I? One, two, three, four, yeah. And then group five. Yes, no, I wanted to, I wanted to find out how many groups I had already allocated. I know we, we have five, so, um, and then group five, they will do Ephesians, chapter one, verses twenty-one and, and, ah, what did I do here? Uh, 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 okay, let's say group one, thirteen and fourteen. Group two, fifteen and seventeen. Group three, eighteen. Group four, nineteen and twenty. And now I'm confused, the way I want, I wanted some groups to share a certain verse. I think, and then group five, twenty-one to twenty-three, just closing. So yeah, let's do this for now, but if you are in a group, I initially, I, you know, I was color coding so that I would know. And then now I'm lost as to which one I wanted to share. But in your group, if you see that you will benefit from the next verse, because it's a continuation, please don't be restrained, you can use that in your, in your, uh, in your study. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, any announcements, pastor, my apologies, we, we have gone past our normal term, but, uh.
Thank you again, uh, Pastor Galca, thank you everyone in attendance. Tomorrow we have, say, this pastor materials is preaching is our first Friday of the month. I encourage everyone to come, to invite guests. Um, that's all from me, thank you so much. Over and back to you.
Thank you, pastor, and thank you everybody for joining and for coming. And as we have said, please meet in your group, study on your own and individually, and collectively come together. I think I, you need to know encouragement, uh, you have been doing a good job in our, in our groups so far. So I want to thank you in that regard. Uh, let me, uh, pray as we close. Father, we thank you for this time and opportunity, Father, to go into your word, to build our capacity and strength in your word. Father, this is the least we can do. For I know, Father, that we need to dedicate even more time in studying your word. For the author of the Psalmist, Father, said that your word, he is hidden in his heart, that he cannot sin against you. He even goes further and says that your word is a light unto his path and a light unto, a lamp unto his feet. Father, it means that without the word, Father, we may be lost. And we need your word as guidance in our lives to lead us and to guide us. Therefore, Father, I thank you for this golden opportunity that we have. Every week, Father, to come and to study your word. I pray the Holy Spirit to continue to develop our understanding and to open our eyes and our hearts to know, to understand and to accept your word and to plant it within our hearts. I thank you, Father, that even as we leave this platform, each and everyone who's online and our families in J C C, Father, continue to be with us. And Father, protect us even as we go to rest, Father. Uh, in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ, I commit each and everyone. Father, till we meet again, uh, as a family, Father, may your love and your mercy continue and to be with us. In the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ, I pray, amen. Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you, Brother Galca, thank you everyone, God bless you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Good night.